Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I have a proclamation I'd like to give. This is for Heart Defect Awareness Week in February, and this family has experienced that. And so I've asked them to be here, and we'll read this proclamation and then let them say a few words and go from there. So, "Whereas each year thousands of patients and families around the nation who are affected by congenital heart defects affecting one in every 100 births are joining together to ask that February 7th through the 14th, 2025 be proclaimed Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week. And whereas our mission is to support CHD research, support families suffering from CHD, and spread awareness of CHD in our local Beaver Creek community. And whereas our mission is to conquer congenital heart disease, and we can accomplish this through collaboration with patients, families, providers, and partner organizations to improve quality and outcome through education, support, research, and awareness. And whereas this is an opportunity for our city to show its support to the congenital heart disease awareness effort and recognize that over 2 million Americans living with CHD, those that have lost the battle, and the healthcare workers who work with these families. And whereas now therefore I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek of Ohio, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim February 7th through the 14th, 2025 as Heart Defect Week here in, or Heart Defect Awareness Week in the City of Beaver Creek."
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Adams, and all of city council. As he said, congenital heart disease affects one in 100 children and adults, so it affects a lot of children and adults in the Beaver Creek community. And so it's obviously a very near and dear cause to our hearts because our son Eli here was born with congenital heart disease, and he's had a couple of open-heart surgeries. And so February, we think of hearts and love, so it's a good time to raise awareness about this condition. And so we are honored that the 7th through the 14th will be the week that we can raise awareness about congenital heart disease in our community. And those who are affected by this condition hopefully feel all the support and love from the Beaver Creek community during that week. So, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I'm going to take one quick moment that's a little bit different than normal, but we have a special guest back here, Ohio Senator Kyle Koehler, and he just wanted to introduce himself, so I thought I would do that right now.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to stop and introduce myself. I've run into all of you at some time or another. My name is Kyle Koehler, and I'm your new state senator sworn in January 6th. Proud to be here, proud to come down to Beaver Creek. I was saying something to the mayor last week when I was at a Wright State game that I went to Wright State. I'm from Clark County, but I went to Wright State and I worked in Beaver Creek for seven years before heading back to Springfield. So I'm aware of Beaver Creek. I didn't realize it was so new back then when I came here. But I will be serving for the next four years. I want to make myself available to you. I'm going to give your clerk here my business card with my cellphone on the back. You can give me a call. If citizens want to contact me, they can email me at koehler@ohiosenate.gov. That's k-o-e-h-l-e-r@ohiosenate.gov. And contact me with your issues. If it's federal issues, we'll put you in contact with somebody. If it's a state issue, we'll get in contact with the state organizations and see why they're not helping you. Otherwise, we're going to be working on a number of things in the next few months, including the state budget, where we're going to figure out how we spend $100 billion of Ohio taxpayers' money, and we'll try to do it as best we can. But I wanted to come down and introduce myself to you tonight.
Thank you for that. Just remember Beaver Creek when it comes to that $100 billion.
I will do that. And I will also say that I know from Sunshine laws, I can't sit in a room with all of you at once and talk with you, but each of you want to contact me via that cellphone number. I'll be glad to come down and sit with you and hear your concerns because we do want to spend taxpayers' monies correctly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming.
I'm headed off to a birthday party for an eight-year-old. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. If you could all stand for the pledge and then join me for a prayer thereafter, I'm going to ask Claire to come up if you'd like to lead us in the pledge.
Wherever she wants to go.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights, and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. We claim this promise as we start this meeting and trust in your provision. Thank you for being with us always. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. All right, we have an agenda before us. Any additions, corrections, changes?
Will we approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No extensions? Then we have a set of minutes in front of us for the January 13th, 2025 regular council meeting. Any changes, corrections, updates?
Move to approve regular meeting minutes for January 13th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January 13th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? None. First up, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-01.
Ordinance 25-01, an ordinance to declare certain city-owned property interests as surplus and to approve the conveyance of a perpetual easement for highway purposes over city-owned property generally known as the Creekside Trail Bike Path and is Green County Auditor parcel number B42-6-25-0-88.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. One of our projects planned for this year is the reconstruction of the bridge on Factory Road. The existing bridge is only two lanes wide, where the new structure is going to be three lanes wide. In addition, we're going to have a path on the east side of the new bridge also. Because of the wider structure and the installation of that path, some additional land is necessary to construct the project. And one of the parcels where some additional land is necessary is the city-owned property where the Creekside Trail sits now. The proposed highway easement is shown in yellow on the drawing on the screen. And again, the purpose of that highway easement is for that new bike path, and there's some overhead power lines that also have to be moved to allow for room to drive the pilings for the new piers. So that only encompass all that area. I know it's a little bit different where the city is conveying a highway easement to the city, but again, it's necessary to lock that down, that this piece of land is for highway purposes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is an ordinance, so there is public input. If anyone has anything they'd like to say with this, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion, council?
I think a lot of this makes sense. I'm just curious if there's any change to the guardrail in that area?
Yeah, absolutely. The guardrail's going to be all brand-new with the project. With the wider structure, we'll need to move the guardrail back to better align with the new width.
Okay, but that's the only real change I can see, other than what you mentioned earlier?
Absolutely. Well, there is, I should mention also, that with the Creekside Trail, we're going to be building a pedestrian island at the trail to help aid people crossing the road a little bit safer as well.
Perfect.
Motion to move ordinance 25-01 to a second reading.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-01 to the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chief Lindsay, liquor license.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent notification of a request for stock ownership transfer for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC, doing business as Red Lobster, located at 2803 North Fairfield Road. Current stock ownership is listed as Red Lobster Management LLC, which will be transferred to RL Investor Holdings LLC. There was no personal history questionnaire provided with this request, and staff has no concerns or objections. Staff is recommending this application. Request move forward without comment.
Motion to accept with no comment.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve this liquor license. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Decision item, fourth quarter financial report. Mr. Graham, welcome.
Good evening. So, the report had been distributed to council members. Provides an overview of where we stood relative to the budget and relative to the actual performance from last year. Documents included this, an analysis, consolidated financial reports for our operating funds, a property tax analysis, overtime analysis, and then our investment schedule. Just some highlights out of the general fund. Revenues came in 17% higher than what were budgeted, and then 7% over what was in the previous year. Significant budget items, local government came in, what, 36% over budget? That's because we'd always budgeted what the county auditor certified, and that did not include money we received from the state for local government funds. In the 2025 budget, that has been corrected. This amount is still 6% less than what we received in the previous year, though, because the state reduced the income tax rate, which is one of the many factors that go into calculating the local government share. So expenditures, nothing significant. The capital expenditures came in under budget, and part of that, the biggest two items were $250,000 that were budgeted for Phase 1 of the sidewalk project, which is first year, a little bit of a slow start maybe, but I know they're waiting for the snow to clear to identify things in year two of this program. And then there was ditch restoration funds that were budgeted for $200,000 that ARPA money was used primarily for. Investment income has come in really great over budget for the year and in excess of what we did last year, but again, always remember that's tied to the market rates. The investment advisor that we are using does have us in some longer-term investments trying to, you know, make use of the higher rates while we have them, but a lot of our money does have to stay relatively liquid with all the street projects and things like that that we have going on, and the fact that we only get revenue primarily twice a year when the property tax settlements are done. That's our primary source. Police fund, really the right in line with the budget on pretty much everything except for, there was some capital money for the parking lots improvements and security that were not done in '24. That budget is carried forward into '25 so that we can start and finish that project. Street funds, I know we've talked extensively about the street. We've outperformed past years just based sheerly on the number of projects we have going on and the amount of grant money that we're getting from ODOT and Ohio Public Works. You'll see budget-wise, we're behind budget on both the expenditure and revenue side, and that's because these projects take a period of time, and while they were budgeted for '24, not all of them got done during '24, and the actual revenues and the expenditures are tied to when that activity occurs. Golf, and so I did watch Mr. Casera's presentation last year, and I'm pretty sure I've already gone over my time limit, but he had pointed out that the record-breaking number of rounds and how great the golf course was doing. Well, just to kind of highlight, they are 6.9% higher compared to prior year and 15% over the budget. Rounds played are up 9% from last year, and of course, that has a trickle down to the pro shop, the food, and everything else related to the golf course. So they are doing wonderfully this year. The expenditures came in at about 97% of the budget. Their operating did exceed their budget by just a slight amount, which, you know, when you have that many more operating costs or operating revenues, you have that offset in there. With that, I will be happy to take any questions.
Move to accept the fourth quarter financial report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the fourth quarter financial report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, that was quick. Counsel time. Councilman Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I, I think for most of us, we were trying to stay warm these past few weeks, but a few things to note, but I think I'll yield my time, given the number of people in the audience and I think desire to hear from the public, so.
Very good, thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Nothing terribly new from our last meeting. Upcoming MBRPC meeting is the first Thursday in February, so I'll have more then. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also don't have a whole lot to report on. Our Region 14 meeting for this month was canceled, so our next one will be held in February. Thank you.
Councilman Kern.
Just one item. I'd like to encourage the listening audience, January 28th, the Historical Society will be meeting at Wright State, and they're going to be in the library, the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Library, and they're going to be looking at items that are reflective of the history of Beaver Creek. And so they want to kind of encourage members and audience to come on out and learn a little bit about the history of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Littrell.
I don't really have anything from last meeting, so I'll also defer my time. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Bales.
I've got a couple of things.
I thought you would.
I want to congratulate Captain Crawl and Sergeant Lee on their promotions today. It was a packed house in here earlier this morning, and two fine officers, and it's neat to watch them rise through the organization. So, thank you, Chief, for that. I also wanted to thank City Manager Landrum for his presentation at our Rotary Club meeting a couple of weeks ago where he did a State of the City address, and it was very well received by the members. The last thing I'll say is that it's not too early to start thinking about the Violence-Free Future Spring Fling event on April 11th at 6 o'clock at Fairgrounds, and you can register for that event on their website. That's all.
Thank you very much. Well, that hits about four things that I had.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Let's see. I was able to attend the celebration for the 76th Republic Day for, sponsored by the India Club, at the Hindu temple. They put on a really nice show, and I was honored to be a part of it and speak there, and so it was a good activity. It actually represents their 76th anniversary of the Constitution, which seems like it should be longer than that, but it's not, because of all the fighting that's going on over there. I kind of remarked there at that, that it's their 76th anniversary, and next year will be our 250th anniversary for the United States. So, I mean, it's, and we both went through the same kind of turmoil with the same country to get our independence, so that was kind of interesting. And with that, I'll let City Manager talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, congrats to the two promotions, Captain Crawl and Sergeant Lee. Job well done. Quickly tonight, Veterans Program, it's filling up quickly. March 31st, applications are due by, until, or until all available spots have been filled. Information's on our website, beavercreekohio.gov/veteran. Limited number, of course, and they'll be displayed from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. And we had a great first year, so this is our second year, looking forward to them. Thoroughfare Plan Open House, this is done every five years, so our open house will be February 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the city council chambers here. Anybody from the public want to input on the city's thoroughfare plan, please stop by. And like, again, this is every five years, we have one of those updated. Road closure, portion of Beaver Valley from old Trune Drive to Quail Run Drive will be closing beginning January 27th. That was today. Road close will be approximately 14 days, and it's to repair the retaining wall. We've coordinated with the City of Fairborn as well, and the detour will be posted as emergency access will not be possible during that work. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Now, we reached a point in our schedule for citizen comments. Anyone interested in addressing counsel on any subject, please come forward, state your name, address. You will have three minutes. Up to six minutes can be donated to you. This is not a back-and-forth, it's just a presentation, and if you do donate your time, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, because it is a public meeting, we have to keep public records.
My name is Catherine Plum. I reside at 2469 Queen Elizabeth Court here in Beaver Creek, and I'm giving my minutes to Sarah.
I'm Valerie Van Gretheisen, 1199 Edition Drive. I'm also an Ohio Certified Volunteer Naturalist, and I'm giving my three minutes to Sarah.
Sarah Bills, 2948 Terra Trail. And Pete, do you have my, oh, perfect. All right. I'm here tonight because we learned that the city was getting ready to create a new landscape ordinance, and so some concerned citizens got together in order to convey some information to you guys that's important to us and hopefully be of assistance. We're hoping to be helpful here. All right. So, manage natural landscapes. What are native plants? Plants that have occurred naturally for thousands of years in a region, ecosystem or habitat without human introduction. Native plants have evolved over time to adapt to the local climate, soil, and other native plants and animals. What is a managed natural landscape? It's a planned, intentional, and maintained planting of predominantly native plant species. It can include such as grasses, wildflowers, ferns, shrubs, trees, vines, and different types of gardens, rain gardens, pollinator gardens, woodland gardens, and ornamental plantings as well. Why create natural landscapes? There's been a drastic decline of birds, butterflies, bees, and other species. We've lost 3 billion birds in North America since the 1970s, including 30% of our songbirds. Monarch butterfly numbers have dropped as much as 90% in the east and over 99% in the west. 33,000 species of native plants and animals in the U.S. are imperiled or functionally extinct, meaning that they're not contributing the way they ought to in the local ecosystem. The U.N. says we'll lose 1 million species in the next 20 years. Insect populations are in especially serious decline. Populations dwindled 78% from 1973 to 2013 and continue to fall. We need insects to pollinate 90% of our plant species. Birds need insects, and insects need native plants. 96% of terrestrial bird species in the U.S. must feed their young insects. Those bird feeders that everybody loves so much do not feed the babies. Carolina chickadees need as many as 9,000 caterpillars to raise just one brood. Many caterpillars can eat only one or a few native plant species. As you can see here, the bottom two pictures, the monarch and its accompanying caterpillar only eat milkweed, and there are multiple species of milkweed, but they do need milkweed. And some butterflies, like some butterflies are generalists, but many of them need one, two, or maybe three specific plants to eat, or they cannot survive. There is almost no intact habitat left in the Midwest. This map I'm showing shows intact habitat cores, which are minimally disturbed, natural areas, at least 100 acres in size and greater than 200 meters wide. The dark green areas indicate intact habitat and high biodiversity. Much of the Midwest has almost no remaining intact habitat. You can see right where Ohio is, and it's pretty darn wide up there. Conventional landscaping is costly and damaging to the environment. Intensive use of fossil fuels, chemical fertilizers, pesticides, water, and labor. Turf grass does not support habitat. 50 to 70% of invasive species and 82% of invasive woody plants were introduced through horticultural trade. Non-native invasive species threaten crops and native species. Invasive species spread rapidly and outcompete native plants and crops. 42% of threatened or endangered native species are at risk because of native plants, or because of invasive species. Here you can see a list of common invasive plants. There are more than this, unfortunately. We highlighted some of the more common ones that we know are of kind of larger concern in the area. But yeah. Benefits of native plants. They feed native pollinators and birds. Many grow in poor soil, like the clay that we all struggle with here in Ohio. Many are drought resistant. They require less watering, no mowing, and no fertilizing. They sequester large quantities of carbon back into the ground. They have much deeper root systems than turf grass, absorb rains and stormwater runoff, control erosion, and reduce standing water for breeding mosquitoes. In this chart, you can see where that little red circle is. That is the root system of turf grass, which is very, very minimal compared to the robust and absorbent root systems of native plants. Managed natural landscapes can save local governments money. Native prairie landscaping costs 56% less to install than traditional landscaping, an annual average savings of $3,400 per acre. Native species also reduce costs by absorbing water that would otherwise flow into sewers, decreasing levels of erosion, and filtering harmful pollutants before they reach waterways. Managed natural landscapes reduce the need for costly stormwater improvement projects. I will not go into the details of the two that we have listed here because you all know this very well, being in the position you are in. Managed natural landscapes mean more birds. Bird-friendly yards with native plants see almost twice as many bird species on average as conventionally landscaped yards. I've been enjoying the bluebirds that have shown up in my yard since I transitioned to all native landscaping. Natural landscaping myth versus facts. There are some myths out there that are somewhat damaging to our native planting reputation. Myth, natural landscapes attract vermin. Natural landscapes cannot sustain a population of black or Norway rats. These non-native rats do not eat the seeds of our native grasses and flowers. They are attracted to human-produced food, corn, grain, pet foods, and food scraps. Unsecured garbage is the main attraction for most pests, such as rodents and raccoons. Native landscaping is not. Native plants attract animals that eat insect pests. And Canada geese, often considered pests, prefer short turf grass over tall and native grasses. I know someone in Beaver Creek who's actually working with their HOA to install, like, native grasses around their retention pond to keep the geese out of their neighborhood because they don't like it. Another myth is natural landscapes are breeding grounds for mosquitoes. This is not a Beaver Creek resident, but a local resident here in the Dayton area, it's their actual yard. So, facts, mosquitoes need standing water to breed. A turf lawn with its shallow root system is more likely to be unable to soak up all the water from a heavy rain than a natural landscape with its deeper roots. Another myth, natural landscapes lower property values because they are messy. The facts, real estate with distinctive, well-done natural landscaping actually possesses a marketing edge and has a positive effect on property values. Developers cite the natural landscapes retained in their developments as an asset and charge more for naturally landscaped homes than for homes in areas with traditional landscaping. High-quality natural features like woodland corridors can preserve and strengthen a community's unique characteristics. Natural landscaping with reduced turf grass is a growing movement. Neighborhood organizations, environmental restoration professionals, landscape architects, and nurseries are environmental restoration professionals, landscape architects, and nurseries are turning more often to natural landscaping for aesthetic and economic reasons, as well as for environmental benefits, like reduced stormwater runoff and improved wildlife habitat. Here's a recent article in the Dayton Daily News from just a couple weeks ago. And you can see right there, the 2025 trends tend to turn to more natural landscapes that allow homeowners to reconnect with nature and be a little kinder to the planet in the process. People are buying plants for wildlife. One in three U.S. adults, 34%, purchased plants to help wildlife in 2021, an increase of just 26% in one year. One in four people buy native plants. And people planning to transform portions of lawn to native landscape went from 9% in 2019 to 19% in 2021. Growing native plants is important to 83% to 96% of U.S. consumers. And I am wrapping up right here. Homegrown National Park is a national movement to restore biodiversity. It's conceived by entomologist Doug Talmey, who will be in town three times this coming year, and we hope you all will be willing to go and hear what he has to say and to learn from his wisdom. This is our ordinance. I'm not going to go through it, but it's been provided to you. It was based on City of Oakwood and other local ordinances that are very similar. And with that, Native Guard, inspirations to enjoy. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm impressed. You got through all of that in nine minutes. When I read that at home, I'd have said, there's no way in the world she'll do that.
I practiced.
I'm sure you did. I'm sure you did.
My name is Debbie Carr. I'm 2889 Lance Road. I've been a Beaver Creek resident for nearly 42 years now, and have been landscaping with native plants and creating what is now called managed natural landscapes for most of that time. It's been a rewarding, educational, and even entertaining endeavor. Every growing season brings pleasant surprises. The young family that was here early, planting like this was great education for the kids. It would allow them to experience the excitement and joy of discovery, you know, right in your own backyard. To learn more about why your constituents are so passionate about landscaping with native plants and creating natural landscapes, recommend attending the program that was mentioned earlier by Professor Doug Talmey. There are several upcoming appearances, and one is just in three weeks here in Beaver Creek at Maine Elementary. I'm a member of the citizens group that formed back in October when we learned that the current weed and grass ordinance was under review. Our group researched ordinances from other Ohio cities that had already been updated to include guidelines and definitions for managed natural landscapes used, and use those as models to customize draft language for our city. And our draft ordinance was shared with all of you. And I would like to thank Randy Burkett and Matt Funk for meeting with three representatives of our group and listening to our concerns, and we're grateful for having the opportunity to provide input and feedback. And we also appreciate the positive direction to a more comprehensive landscape management ordinance for our city. I think it's been a beneficial and educational experience for all involved in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Debbie Whitaker. I live at 1375 Bills Drive. I moved here 33 years ago, and about 25 years ago, I started my gardening for very practical reasons, because I live at the bottom of a hill, which I had a lot of pooling water, and it was also in my yard. So I started planting traditional plants with the aim of kind of reducing that amount of water. And as I found out more about native plants, I started incorporating more of those. I now have fewer wet areas in my yard, while it still looks inviting and well-maintained. If my small contribution can help with the stormwater runoff, then I think that encouraging other residents to do the same may help with those areas that experience the same concerns. I believe that growing a garden is extending an invitation to my neighbors to encounter the beauty and wonder of nature. I have met many people who have stopped by to look at my garden, who I would not have met otherwise. I want to contribute in my small way to create a community that is welcoming and inviting place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Frida Lozano. I live at 1329 Fudge Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio. I'm a junior at Beaver Creek High School right now. I'm on the varsity track and field team, and officially as of today, I am ranked 100 within the top speakers for speech and debate within our country. I do so all while representing our city. I am the daughter of people who care a lot about native yards. I personally don't care as much, but I thought I should give you my thoughts and my memories from our yard. My memories with our yard, which at times does look a little bit crazy, but my memories are, for every year of high school, I've gotten to take my first day pictures in front of this yard. And hopefully, I'll be able to do so my senior year. I remember taking my homecoming pictures with my yard and the flowers in my yard as well. And I remember putting my childhood dog's grave within this yard as well. And I think my dog, who isn't here with us today, is a great demonstration of truly how life and death works, because my dog, who isn't here now, won't come back. But for my yard and the plants that die within that yard and do look a little bit ugly for a little while, they do come back, and they do look beautiful once again. Because, trust me, as someone who lives very close to the high school and who has a lot of friends who know exactly where I live, it would be incredibly embarrassing if I lived somewhere where their yard looked crazy at all times. But trust me, it doesn't. It looks beautiful at times. And as someone who's a teenager who gets very embarrassed, and I could tell you a lot about appearance and how much I care about it, the yard is the one thing that I've truly stopped caring about. Although, it can be annoying sometimes when my mom makes me go buy native plants with her, it's become something that's become fun for me. But trust me, if it can become fun for me, a teenager who just wants to stay in bed and watch TikTok, it can become fun and invigorating for every single one of you. My yard is something that I like. It's not something I probably care about as much as the people who are here and also speaking on the same issue, but it's something that I hope to keep. And it's something that I hope to take pictures in front of my senior year, and hopefully for the next four years into my college career as well, and especially for my little sister. And if there's one thing that I want to continue to remember for the rest of my life, it's the monarch butterfly. And one of the only reasons that I know what the monarch butterfly looks like and its caterpillars is because of the native yard and the plants that are in it. If you think about most of your children or even your grandchildren, they will almost never experience what a monarch butterfly looks like, unless we have more people like my parents or any of the other people here who are supporting native yards and supporting animals and insects like the monarch butterfly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you just moved up to 98.
Wow, that's a hard act to follow. My name is Mary Beth Sweetland. My sister Judy and I own the home at 1142 Meadow Drive in Beaver Creek. First, I'd like to thank Matt Funk, who isn't here, to hear me thank him. But I do want to thank him and the native plant gardeners in Beaver Creek who worked on the language changes to the existing ordinance. The people in this room who care about native plants and our environment, me included, are good citizens of Beaver Creek. We are, in a small but significant way, helping to ensure that our precious and vulnerable natural resources have a fighting chance in a world that throws far too many chemicals into the environment to both grow and kill things. The residents of Beaver Creek need their city council to educate them about the benefits of Ohio's native flora and what it does for the environment. Using Beaver Creek in Touch can be a starting point, opening people's eyes to the benefits of using native plants in our yards. For example, it could be a "Did You Know?" column. Did you know that endangered or threatened monarch butterflies can only survive in our area if we plant the beautiful perennials on which they feed? Or did you know that the New Jersey tea bush, a native to Ohio, is the host plant for the blue azure butterfly? The city could also feature different fens in the newsletter and explain that these areas are critically important to our local environment, but that they are fragments of habitation that homeowners can sew together by doing responsible native plant gardens in their own yards. Beaver Creek can market itself as a bird's destination, but only if our native plants and the millions who migrate through the area every year have food enough to sustain them. Native plant shrubs and trees can increase bird species that stop here on a migration. And every native plant put in the ground in every yard by Beaver Creek residents can make a difference. Ohio is in the middle of the Atlantic and Mississippi flyways, the migration used by millions of birds each year. The native plant gardening movement is not some woke entity worthy of scorn or a dismissive pat on the back, far from it. In fact, what we're admitting is that our ancestors had it right. Our grandmothers and grandfathers, and their parents, and their grandparents, and on and on, gardened with native plants. I thank you for giving these ideas some thought. Please note that there are volunteers in Beaver Creek who would gladly take the load off the city council and Matt's division by submitting appropriate writings to Beaver Creek in Touch. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Howdy. I'm Judy Sweetland, her younger sister. I live at 1142 Meadow Drive, and I am in support of native plantings. And I just looked up today, as a matter of fact, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, a Division of Wildlife, their Threatened and Endangered Species List. In 1974, there were 71 species on it. Now, there are 412. There are 132 endangered species, 44 threatened species, 123 species of concern, 36 extirpated species, and 20 extinct species. I had the pleasure, because we've been planting native plants for three years now, to experience a moth whom, you'll have to excuse the name, I don't know who names these moths, it's called the unexpected cinchnea. Okay. And it was unexpected, because it is on the endangered list. And yet, one came to my yard because of the species of milkweed that we had planted. And I immediately called the Division of Wildlife, and I said, hey, you know, good news, we've got one here. And I took a photo and forwarded it to them. It's a very distinct species, one you cannot mistake for another. And I was just astounded that the number of 14 moths, eight butterflies, 10 birds, 26 dragonflies and damsel flies, three beetles and one bee are all on Ohio's endangered species list. 10 dragonflies and damsel flies, two beetles, five birds, four moths, and one butterfly are on the threatened species. And the whole idea that 36 have just been eliminated from the state of Ohio is just shocking. And it's partially because of habitat loss. I work for a company who does lights-out during bird migration. It's a large company. I consider it large. It's got over 200 employees. They do their small part. We can each do our own small part to shorten this tremendously long list. And I didn't even go over the amphibians and other flora and fauna, excuse me, fauna that are in danger in Ohio. But we can shorten this list just by everyone doing their part and planting native species. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'll give a short speech.
You've got three minutes. You can take whatever you want.
I don't need that long, for sure. I'm Susanna Lozano. I live at 1339 Fudge Drive. And I'm old enough to remember the time when butterflies flew everywhere, and there were lots of them. And I am sad that there's not very many anymore. I hardly ever see them. And I just want to say that I think you guys should celebrate every single person in this room who is behind this movement and who wants to plant gardens, because I tell you, it is hard work. I watch my daughter, who lives next door, and oh my God. I mean, her and her husband can be out there from sunup to sundown, planting and digging, and oh my God. I mean, I just want to go out there and tell them, stop. You know, you're working too hard. It is hard work to do this. And probably every person in this room who is behind this movement is working hard to get this done. So I think you should celebrate them, put one of them in the paper every week, and make a big deal about them, and get other people to do it, and make Beaver Creek someplace where there's lots and lots of butterflies. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ed Bogdan. I'm a 35-year resident of Beaver Creek at 1421 Coolwood Court. I'm also, for about three decades, I've been on the environmental committee here. And I don't want to talk a lot, but you've heard all the information, and I just wanted to give you my perspective. We got two other members of the committee here tonight, too. We were impressed with this group of folks and the research that they did to look into how to bring our ordinances up to date. There are people already adding natural things to their yard. We see that walking around our neighborhoods, and it's important to get ahead of that trend and give them some guidance on how to do it correctly. And I think the way they've done it, the way they've worked this, is to be a win-win. It's a win for the people who plant the flowers, and alternatively, it's a win for the neighbors. Because there is some concern about neighbors saying, oh, this thing could get out of control. But I think updating the ordinance in a reasonable fashion has alleviated most concerns about, you know, any yards going crazy and being just a mess. But three of these ladies came and talked to our group, and we were impressed with what they were doing. And I've been impressed. I've been working with them for the last two or three months. And I just want to put my stamp of approval on it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the city. Okay, with that, I'll close the public portion. But I do want to thank you all for being here. I think it's really important for people to be a part of their community, especially what they're passionate about. One of the things I've always said is find your passion and then work it. And I can tell you, people are really passionate about it. I know you've worked really well with Mr. Burkett and Mr. Funk, and I'm sure that we'll come up with something here that will hopefully be satisfactory to everybody. So, thank you very much again for being here. I appreciate you spending your time with us this evening. And I'm really kind of glad it's not 9 o'clock. I'd make you stay here all night, so. Anything else for the good of the order?
Move adjourn, Your Honor.
She beat you to it.
Second.
Second it.
Move you second it.
Yes, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hope not. Everyone have a good night. Be safe on the way home.